To the Licensing Subcommittee, I'm David Barker, I'm going to be chairing the Subcommittee this morning. And before we do the rest of the introductions, my crib sheet tells me that I have to hand over to Democratic Services to read out the housekeeping arrangements, so could I please ask Democratic Services to do that?
Thank you Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission. For example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you Joanne. Have we had any apologies for today's meeting? I have three exclusions of press and the public, this meeting is being held in public and broadcast and there are no current reasons to exclude anyone and hopefully it will stay that way. Would any member like to declare an interest before we start? Right, well, welcome again to the Licensing Subcommittee, I'm still David Barker, I'm still chairing the Subcommittee. To my left and right are the members of the committee, would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Hello everyone, I'm John Wright, councillor for Walkley Board.
Morning, Barbara Masters, councillor for Ettlesall Ward.
And you'll see we have a number of officers of the council with us, working with us this morning. And if I could speak, we would get through these meetings a lot more quickly. So could I ask the officers to introduce themselves please?
Morning, Samantha Vaughan, legal advisor to the Subcommittee.
Shimla Finch, licensing service, I will present in the report today.
Joanne Cooper, Democratic Services.
Could I now ask the applicants to introduce themselves?
Yes, my name's Charles Denny, I am a licensing consultant for a company from Impacts and I've been instructed to represent Lee Dibble who's here with us today.
And could I ask the responsible authorities and interested parties to introduce themselves please, starting with Joanne?
Thanks Chair. Julie Haig, I'm the safeguarding licensing manager for the Safeguarding Children Partnership.
Carla Surrira, I am the nursery owner on the same premises where the licensing application is taking place. And I've been a nursery owner for 25 years and I also am a representative on Sheffield Education Funding Forum for early years.
Oh welcome and thank you for everyone for making the time to be here today. You will see from the papers that we have a set process for these hearings and you will see at point four of that, it says that the solicitor to the committee will detail the process to be followed. So Sam, could I ask you to detail the process please?
Thank you Chair. Everyone got a copy of the report and all the extra documents that they need to? Yeah, lovely. So the licensing officer who Shimla this morning will introduce the report. Any questions concerning the report can be asked by members and the applicants if there's anything missing or inaccurate and we'll then get that amended for the record. We'll head first to the representatives for the responsible authorities, so we'll go to Julie from Safeguarding first and then we'll go to Carla afterwards to detail their relevant representations. So to expand on what you've written in the report that's already there, so just to flush that out a little bit. Members have an opportunity to ask questions of both parties and with the leave of the Chair, the applicant and their representative may cross-examine the safeguarding and the interested party as well. We'll then head to the applicant to detail the application, provide clarification on the application and response to the representations made, so both written in the report and verbally here at the hearing today. Again, members and officers can ask you questions and with the leave of the Chair, either parties can ask questions as well. You'll be given the opportunity to sum up the application, so the final say will be with you. And the licensing officer will then detail the options which are listed in the report already. Members will then go into private session to take legal advice and consider the application, so you're welcome to hang around and wait and then we can give you that decision a little bit later on today if you wish. The decision of the Licensing Committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made there under. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice, so we can do that in open session as we are now or private where we just ask you guys to pop next door, we'll have a discussion and then we'll invite you back in and feedback what that was. And as the Chair said, the hearing is held in public this morning and is being live webcast. And that should be everything, thank you Chair.
Thank you Sam. So Shimla, can we have the report please?
Thank you Chair. This report is to consider an application for the variation of a premises licence under the Licensing Act for Authentite in Century Park. The application was submitted on the 19th of February 2025 and is attached to Appendix A of the report. The licence holder proposes to extend the sale of alcohol hours and to include off-sales. It proposes to increase the opening hours, a change in the layout of the premises and to remove condition 19 of the premises licence which restricts the sale of alcohol to diners seated at a table consuming a meal. A copy of the current premises licence is attached to Appendix B which details current times and the conditions on the licence. The application has been referred to the Licensing Subcommittee due to unresolved representations from Sheffield Children's Safeguarding Partnership, a local business and a local resident which can be found at Appendix C. These representations details the concerns raised in regards to safeguarding children, noise issues and the removal of condition 19 of the premises licence. Further evidence has been submitted by Sheffield Safeguarding and distributed to all parties this morning. A further local business has withdrawn their representation following an agreed condition regarding the outside screens and can be found at Appendix D. The applicant and interested parties have been invited to attend the hearing. There are no specific financial implications arising from this application, however additional costs may be encouraged of the matter go to appeal. The legal position in carrying out our functions is detailed at paragraph six of the report and it's recommended that members carefully consider the representations made and take such steps as Subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of licensing objectives. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Have members got any questions regarding the report at all? Do the applicants have any questions regarding the report? You've all shaken your head before, I've had to say responsible authorities and interested parties, so thank you for saving me that. So if there are no questions on the report, then I will go to the responsible authority in Julie to detail your representations please.
Thanks Chair. First, I would like to apologize for the lateness in submitting the supporting paperwork. I have had the opportunity to discuss the contents of that this morning with Mr Denny and he was happy for me to make reference to it in this hearing, so thank you for that cooperation. The Safeguarding Partnership made a representation due to concerns about the location of the premises, concerns about the operators' difficulties so far in compliance with the current licence conditions and therefore the proposal in the application to relax those current conditions. So I thought it would be helpful to put into context some of the difficulties we've had in terms of compliance so that we can illustrate for the committee why we're concerned about this application to relax current conditions. So I'll talk you through a chronology of interventions and concerns since the premises was licensed just seven months ago. So going back to August 2024, the original application was made for a premises licence to sell alcohol and the Safeguarding Partnership, after some negotiations, asked for some conditions that were agreed to promote safeguarding and these conditions went on the licence along with other conditions restricting the times and circumstances that alcohol could be on sale. For example, they weren't permitted to sell alcohol when the nursery was open and this was so that toddlers wouldn't be exposed to alcohol-related irresponsible behaviour. And we were happy with that and so the premises started to operate under that licence on the 16th of September. Just five weeks after that, I received an email from the police on the 21st of October 2024 which said that a complaint had been made by a local resident saying that after-hours drinking was taking place until around 11:30 at night and the complainant also said that they had witnessed persons who appeared under the age of 18, so they said around 16 years old, getting into a van under the influence of alcohol after leaving the premises. So of course, that led to a multi-agency visit on the 7th of November. Myself from Safeguarding, Mrs Jarvis from Police Licensing and Mr Bradshaw from Council Licensing went along to talk to Mr Dibble, the licence holder, and just check compliance, see if we could have a look at the CCTV to see whether there was any truth in the allegation and anything to be concerned about. Unfortunately, the CCTV was not compliant with the licence requirements. We did a full licence compliance check on the 7th of November and a number of breaches were identified and those breaches are referred to in the action plan and in the warning letter from the council which have been circulated. When we were discussing management arrangements with Mr Dibble, it came to light also there was no valid DPS in place. So on the 7th of November, the licensee was advised by the enforcement agencies, so police and council licensing, that alcohol sales must cease with immediate effect until they got the house in order basically and the DPS issue was resolved along with the licence compliance. We were so concerned about that in terms of multi-agency response, we set an action plan to help Mr Dibble. Usually we set an action plan to give some structure, some really specific measures that need to be in place to help them to operate responsibly and in compliance with the licence. And again, that's been circulated for your attention. So that was just two months after opening, we were already on an action plan. And the premises was taken priority because of the location, the alcohol sales being so close to a place where young children are frequenting daily was a priority for us. The action plan was in place until all the objectives were met on it and it was eventually signed off, so we were pleased about that. On the 9th of January... On the 9th of January, I attended a meeting with Mr Dibble and Miss Bradshaw of Council Licensing, that was to monitor progress with the action plan. So at this stage, we're now a couple of months on from the complaint and the, the original issue's been raised, Mr Dibble still appeared to be struggling with some aspects of compliance. So he had cooperated with the requests around safeguarding, he'd done his risk assessment, he'd done the training, but there was still some issues that hadn't been addressed and after such a long time, we were starting to get concerned about a lack of compliance. In that meeting on the 9th of January, Mr Dibble expressed an interest in changing the licence, as in thinking about an application to vary, to get rid of some other restrictions around alcohol sales, to develop the business. And I did say in that meeting that that's something we couldn't support at that moment in time because we hadn't seen evidence of effective control of the premises and compliance. And I think my email of the 16th of, of January, which has been circulated confirms that I was clear, we, we're not in a position to support you with that, let's work on compliance and, and demonstrating due diligence. On the 16th of January, the, the council issued their warning, warning letter about non-compliance. So eventually on the 17th of February, the action plan was discharged, we, we felt we'd got compliance, so we felt that we were in a good place then to start moving forward. Also in February 2025, despite being advised otherwise, until we got consistent compliance and a better track record, we saw an application, this application being submitted to vary the premises licence, seeking to remove the restrictions around alcohol sales. So on the 18th of March, this is when the Safeguarding Partnership submitted a representation to express concerns to the licensing committee about any changes to that initial licence, which was conditioned in a strict way for, for a reason, which was due to the location being near a children's nursery. We were concerned, as I said, about the history of non-compliance and about the risk of children being exposed to alcohol-related antisocial behaviour should the licence be relaxed under this variation. On the 10th of April, so five days ago, I received an email from Council Licensing from Miss Bradshaw, who reported that they had been back to the premises to investigate a complaint, an extract of which I've just circulated this morning. The complaint was made to the council on the 8th of April regarding an incident that happened on the Friday the 4th of April and this is the incident that I've discussed with Mr, Mr Denny this morning. So the complainant was describing customers behaving in an antisocial manner, so drinking, swearing, noise nuisance, irresponsible parking, I think they said, well, they have sent some photographs to support what they saw and witnessed. Miss Bradshaw informed the Safeguarding Partnership last week that she and a police officer went out to meet with Mr Dibble on the 8th of April to discuss this incident and their findings were that Mr Dibble was aware of the incident, he said he wasn't at the premises at the time when the incident occurred. He said that customers ordered food with their drinks and sat in the outside seating area, but that then after they'd eaten their food, they continued to drink. And, and this is one of the concerns about the nature of, of this premises, it's the customer, customer behaviour and the customer expectations. Mr Dibble had said that customers had brought stools from inside the premises to sit outside, but that they weren't causing a noise nuisance, however, he also did say that staff had tried to intervene and customers had ignored the staff when they'd asked them to, you know, to comply. Staff phoned Mr Dibble reportedly and he attended the premises around 14:45, so quarter to three in the afternoon and when he told the customers they must order food when they were, whilst they were drinking, the customers left. Miss Bradshaw and Police Licensing advised Mr Dibble of his licensing responsibilities and the importance of complying with the conditions specifically, conditions 1, 19 and 22 and that he must only serve alcohol when people are consuming a meal. And Miss Bradshaw's reported that then that led to a discussion about what constitutes a substantial meal, which, which is always a, a challenge. So Miss Bradshaw reported that they then viewed the CCTV from the incident on the 4th of April. So they looked at it at quarter past two, half past two, quarter to three and said that the CCTV showed customers stood outside drinking alcohol, some customers were seated with snacks in the middle of a table, a few customers stood beyond the designated seating area into the car park, which we can see in the, in the photographs. At quarter to three, Mr Dibble arrived, this is from CCTV and customers left, however, an hour later, they, they still continued to look at the CCTV and at five past four, CCTV showed customers again outside drinking alcohol, they weren't all seated, consuming a meal, there were some snacks on tables, stools had been again brought outside for customers to sit on. By 7:30pm, there were no customers seen outside. Now the, the point and the importance of the timings in terms of this representation is that activity is, is in the afternoon, it's a sunny day and the, the concerns for us are that people want to stand outside, enjoy the weather, enjoy socialising and so forth, but the location isn't appropriate in this instance. So Miss Bradshaw reports that in response to the, the incident of the 4th of April, an informal warning and more advice was issued to Mr Dibble about the importance of complying with licence conditions, so this was on the 8th of April in that meeting. And those conditions that are of particular concern are condition one, that there shall be an implementation of a policy to maintain low noise levels to mitigate public nuisance. Condition 19, alcohol shall only be served to diners seating at a table and consuming a meal. And condition 22, the external area will be regularly monitored by CCTV and staff patrols to ensure compliance and to ensure that customers remain within the boundaries of the premises. So those conditions are clear, enforceable and, and if they were complied with, would, would actually resolve the matter, you know, the issues would be contained, they would be managed and, and I'm here because we haven't got any evidence that issues are being managed to date, so we're, we're seven, almost eight months into operating under a premises licence. So in, in terms of this representation, non-compliance has been an issue throughout, starting just five weeks after the premises received its licence, they got permission to sell alcohol and ongoing until last week. The Safeguarding Children Partnership has considered the lack of compliance and is not satisfied that the applicant is, is able or willing to comply with these licence conditions. And I think the, the approach therefore is to, to remove the conditions so that they can operate in a, in a more relaxed manner, which is a concern to ourselves due to the location. Despite being on an action plan from the 7th of November to the 17th of February, we yet to see evidence of consistent compliance and concerningly, the applicant now seeks to remove the very conditions upon which we relied to make the coexistence of the businesses, the Authentite, so close to a children's nursery and that's why we're concerned, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you Julie, before I move on to questions, if, if we take the rest of the representations and then we'll open it up so we can address them all, so.
I think location, location, location springs to mind when we, when you listen to that because it is in the wrong place and while no one would want to prevent anyone expanding their own business, to have that restaurant selling alcohol and in essence what Mr Dibble wants is a pub, you don't have to eat, you can just buy a drink. They've failed so far in showing that they can manage that, as obviously Julie's proven. From our point of view, it is all about safeguarding and if you look at any of the photographs that you've got, the nursery play area is just the other side of the last car you can see, so probably seven car lengths away from Authentite. We share an open car park and an open area and we have a separate fenced-off play area for the children and we've been there for, for a long number of years, I think since 2009 and we've managed to, to operate very safely. The, the traffic obviously is, is of a concern to us because you will always have people, by, by, by the very essence that they're driving in and drinking, they're driving out having drunk and that doesn't mean that they are drunk, but they have consumed alcohol if this goes ahead. And in, in fact indeed now, when the original licence was applied for, we accepted that, you know, there is another business alongside us and we do have to give some ground and so we worked out that we potentially could safeguard the children by saying we won't allow them out after four o'clock, because that was going to be the, the time during the week when Mr Dibble's licence would kick in, so he could sell alcohol after four o'clock, except on a Friday, which was granted till, from 12 o'clock. So whilst we took extra precautions and, and implement further policies to safeguard the children, we do find that on Friday, we can't keep them out till four o'clock, we do have to bring them in, staff often bring them in an hour or so earlier because it's too noisy, it's too raucous. Whilst people are not threatening, staff with children in their care often feel threatened by the noise and the language that's, that's coming and, you know, that's not Mr Dibble's fault in the sense that he cannot control that, he's not there all the time and he can't control that, but that is the nature of people drinking and socialising outside. And, you know, we talked about, you know, when it's, that picture shows on a Friday afternoon, and we're not actually into full-blown summer yet, but that was a nice day, that picture shows how busy it was with no, very few people eating in fact and, and drinking. If, if, if people, if it gets busier and more people want to come, where do they stand? Where do they wait before it's busy to go in? They wait in the car park, they'll probably be served a drink by their friends who are already in there and they're standing around in that car park having banter and lots of fun. And the other thing that's evident on a Friday afternoon is it is not families that are enjoying a, a, a lunch out there, it is workmen finishing early traditionally on a Friday afternoon and meeting up for a drink. Absolutely no problem with that, go to a pub, go to a place that's designated for that, but to do that within 15 yards of a nursery setting, where we then are having to take our children back inside because it's too uncomfortable for staff to keep them outside is, is wrong, it's, it's the wrong place to have that and to, it's the wrong place to have it already and it certainly is the wrong place to extend that, to allow it to become a pub and have no need to sit down and eat. I think it would, it, it's, it is pretty much uncontrollable. So for us it is, you know, safeguarding is a fundamental practice in everything we do, it runs through our day in every single aspect, you know, about wellbeing, safety, health, protecting and preventing from harm. We can never predict how people behave and all we can do is try and mitigate. We have a statutory duty to make sure that our children are safeguarded and our staff as well and we lose control of that ability by the, the drinking that's allowed outside in that car park, that, that aspect of security and safety is taken away from us and all we can do is make policies to try and mitigate, but the reality is unless we put those children back inside safely, we, we can't genuinely say that we have done what we're legally obliged to do. It puts a lot of stress on the staff and, again, it's location, it's, it's, it's not the place to have people drinking and I would urge that the application is rejected on the grounds of safeguarding, thank you.
Thank you, I'll open this up to questions then now. Barbara, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, yes, I have a few. Can you clarify, did you say you'd been there 20 years?
Sorry, 2009, so 2009, sixteen years.
Thank you. And who was next to, who occupied the premises next to you before the restaurant moved in?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, who was, who occupied those premises beforehand?
There were no premises before the restaurant, before the restaurant moved in, they put port-a-cabin, it's, it's in a, a type of port-a-cabin building that was set up as a little takeaway and that was set up as a takeaway initially and then has continued to expand and grow into something completely different from what it was initially put in there.
Thank you. Where do your children come from?
Majority come from the locality, so they are from the local areas. People sometimes take their children on their way to work and drop off there, but the majority will live in and around the S20, S21 area.
Right, so walking distance effectively for most of them, busing as well as?
Oh yes, lots of them are walking distance, yes.
Right, Nathan, what, I mean, usually sort of nurseries have sessions, mornings, afternoons, so what are the key sort of movement times for your nursery?
Well, we've, we've always up until just recently operated a flexible day for parents because people's working day and people's life is not always necessarily to a timetable. So we've, we up until recently have operated a, a sort of free time, so you could say, I'd like to bring them in at 11 till four or I'd like to come in 10 till two. We've had to change that now and we've had to try and, we've had to increase the hours that people stay, so we don't have as much to in and fro in outside of the setting. So we now have changed that, so between 10 and, so between, we're open from seven till seven, but predominantly eight till 10 would be to in and fro in and four till six would be to in and fro in, as in parents picking up and dropping off. The mid part of the day is where we're trying to keep the children in the setting and not as much movement, but obviously part of our remit with Ofsted is to make sure that those children do get lots of fresh air and lots of outings and lots of ability to, to, to take their learning outside as well.
And you have outside space, did I hear correctly that it's open fencing?
Yes, yeah.
Right, and is that a possibility that you actually have sort of more secure panelled fencing tubes?
It is panelled fencing, sorry, when I said open, I mean it's open from the car park, so our building is here and across the other side of the car park, we have a completely secured, panelled, gated area that is purely for the children to be in.
But it's still quite intrusive from the restaurant?
Well, the fence is, is safety, the children cannot get out, but it doesn't prevent, it doesn't have a roof, it doesn't prevent the noise transpiring from, you know, seven car lengths away.
Right, but, no, that's that one, right, and I think at the moment, they're the main things, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And is there anything you'd like to ask at the moment?
Yeah, I've got a question for Julie. Were the licence to be varied so that it was less restrictive later in the evening after the nursery is closed, would that satisfy your concerns around safeguarding?
I, I can't see a problem with that, councillor.
Thank you.
Grilled Julie times. I'd just be interested to know if this premises had been fully compliant from day one, had not caused any problems, would you still have had concerns about what is being applied for today?
I think we would, we would have, if we had more time to have evidenced consistent compliance, we wouldn't have had these concerns. The, the problem is, usually if someone's applying for a variation, they come along with evidence of compliance and that it's not going to impact on the objectives of the Licensing Act or the, the community or surrounding area. So we would usually support a move to, for a business to do. So we would usually support a move to, for a business to develop because they've been responsible and they can evidence it. We've got the contrary. We have evidence of non-compliance. And I don't think that's an unwillingness. Mr Dibble has been willing to meet with us, try things, but it's quite complex. The nature of the business, on paper, it sounds like, you know, a licensed restaurant, but it really is about the location, which is the concern. So, so no, if we had come today with evidence of compliance, our concerns would be far less, if at all. Thank you, Chair.
I can check with your knowledge and experience. Are you aware of similar sort of areas where we have licensed premises and young children in close proximity? And have there been issues in other areas with that sort of model?
In 20 years now, this is the first instance I've been involved with an educational setting in conflict with a licensed premise. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
There is an example, I did put it in my submission.
I did see that one, yes.
I'll not repeat it then.
But could I ask you, have you tried raising concerns direct with the premises? And how have you felt, if you have done, how have you felt they've been responded to?
We haven't directly contacted Mr Dibble again. I mean, there's been the odd occasions where we've had to, but it was a given, it's been given, the licence has been given. So some of the issues we've had are, they're not specific complaints as in something has happened. We have spoken about some of the things, but it's just safeguarding. It's just a simple word that's blended around, but it's just so very important that. It, I'm getting a bit tongue tied here now, but in answer to your question, no, we haven't approached him.
Sam, is there anything you'd like to ask at this stage?
Have you had any contact from any parents sort of with concerns over the premises?
We tightly have had to change what we do and try and tightly control how we allow the children to play and what we do. So that was one of our biggest concerns, is that parents will say, that's not safe for my children to go to and I don't want them there. And there are people out there, and I've seen it on forums, because it has, just in its very nature, has raised concerns. And there's parents that are saying, you know, I don't think I'd want my children to go to a place where there's a pub there and things like that. So it will have a knock on effect on us. But I can't, that can't be a reason why we object. Because what, people might or might not come and use our services. But for the parents that are already there, we have thought long and hard and thought long and hard about how we mitigate the Authentai being there and what we do to prevent any problems occurring. And that's, that's a very big strain and a stress on a daily basis to make sure that that happens.
And has the nursery spoken to any of the other businesses and premises in the area?
Yes, I've been approached by, there's a tutoring business upstairs. And one of the ladies approached me there, she missed the deadline and unfortunately can't be submitted. But had said that many of her parents complained because she's there until eight, eight thirty in the evening after school, where they do tutoring and a lot of her parents have complained about the language and the congregation of loud noises. They've had to speak to their children about not swearing and why we don't swear and things like that. So they're not at all happy and they are there longer than we are. And so they have to contend with that later on in the day. I also have had, the gentleman from the door company who's next door, who originally had given his agreement to it based around the separation area, has also written, had wrote to me and had written, and I think that's now been submitted, that he had made agreements about how that would work and felt that Mr Dibble had not followed through with the promises he'd made him. So he also wanted to make his objection very clear in terms of the traffic and the amount of cars and the parking and things like that that are causing concern. And there's residents as well up there that have also said, you know, that they feel intimidated in the evening coming home.
The residents sort of in the Century Park or?
Yeah, it's a strange thing because we've got businesses in there.
It's right next.
And then they've got two flats upstairs, which, which actually on the, virtually overlook the Authentai on the side, the opposite side to us.
You said you sort of started managing pickups and drop offs then, eight until 10 in the morning and four until six in the evening. What's sort of the latest, do your staff are there until?
Oh, well, we can be there from, we're open from seven, so staff are usually in there from quarter to seven.
Okay.
And we could be there till quarter past seven in the evening. And have definitely made reference to the fact that they don't feel comfortable. We make sure there's always two staff, well, there's never less than two staff anyway. But sometimes it's two or three staff we make sure we've got on just so that they don't feel uncomfortable when they're leaving premises.
That's good for me, thank you.
Use my microphone, I keep telling other people to do the same. Do the applicants have any questions for the responsible authorities or interested parties?
I think I'll reserve my comments until it's my turn.
In that case then, it is your turn. So if you'd like to state your case and respond to the objections.
Our goal is to support Lee Dibble today and also to try and get some hard, fast evidence on what you consider your decisions. There were some rather emotive words said by both of our representatives here today, which I just want to take up without it becoming an argument. If we can go back to the 17th of February, that was the date on which Mr Dibble was discharged following the action plan. And I quote from that letter. Please continue with the good work you and your staff have achieved. And we thank you for working with us over these past five months. If you require any assistance with us in the future, please do not hesitate to get in touch. That to me does not sound like what the police would say if there were constant issues throughout that action plan. It sounds to me like Mr Dibble was doing everything he could to support the action plan from start to finish. Furthermore, we've only got one documented situation that's occurred since the 17th of February, which of course was the issue on the 4th of April. I was unaware of that until I arrived this morning. I graciously said, yes, I'll have a look at it, but we did not discuss. I think Julie was talking about it for about 10 minutes. I had about 20 seconds outside to have a quick look. And I thought, from the interests of everybody who are here today, it's better to say yes than no. So I've now read it and I've also spoken to Mr Dibble. So I want to now also focus on that particular day. It was a leading, leaving party from one of the businesses. So it wasn't pre-booked and as a result, we had a group of mostly men, I think it might have been entirely men, turning up in the afternoon to have some drinks and have something to eat. Yes, it was a Friday, yes, they were starting their weekend, yes, it got a little bit noisy. It was not acceptable and Lee has since said that he went to deal with the situation and everyone left in good time once it had been brought into his attention. The word constant was mentioned. And that's the only instance since the 17th of February that's actually been referred to today. So from my point of view, from the 17th of February until the 4th of April, everything was going well. Yes, there were four issues back on the 16th of January, where, I actually listed here, entries were not recorded in a refusals log. I note that during the visit, the refusals log was set up and agreed to use going forward. There was no written noise policy. There was no written dispersal policy. And CCTV recordings were not evidenced to be stored for 31 days. All of those matters, which weren't perfect at the time, have since been absolutely dealt with. So from the 17th of February and probably for a few days, maybe a couple of weeks beforehand, the premises has basically been fully compliant with its licence. We've had one incident, which has been brought to all of our attentions today, which I apologise for, Lee apologises for. He took action at the time and we'll do everything we can to prevent it happening again. It's not a pub, it's not intended to be a pub, so let's stick with calling it a restaurant, please. Going back, I had absolutely no involvement in this premises until two weeks ago. So I'm not really in a position to make a lot of comments about how things were going in the early weeks of the licence being granted. But I'm certainly grateful for the licence was granted because it gave the opportunity for a business to do his business and do his best to be successful in a fairly challenging situation with a nursery so nearby. What I would like to do now is to bring forward some suggestions of conciliation. Because these were thought about very carefully by myself over the previous few days. And I honestly believe that if I can find all of this paper. They will go a long way towards helping you with your decisions about. So going back to the actual application. One point was to extend the hours of sale of alcohol to 11 o'clock each night and till two o'clock in the morning on New Year's Day. I've spoken to Lee about this and he and I are totally in agreement that this premises does not require a special extension for New Year's Day. It is not going to be a party place. And so we will withdraw the application for two o'clock in the morning on New Year's Day. If someone wanted a particular function there which was compliance with the licence, then we could use a temporary event notice, but we don't see any need for it to be in the licence itself. Furthermore, 2300 hours is quite late for a restaurant in terms of selling alcohol. So my proposal is this actually drawn back from 2300 to 2230. And therefore the premises would close at 2300 hours instead of 2330, which would therefore mean that everything would be locked up, shut, customers have gone by 11 o'clock at night on a daily basis. Floor plans, I believe, have been updated, so we don't need to go into that. And to add off sales to the licence. This is not intended to become somewhere where someone can literally come and collect whatever alcohol they want and drink it outside or drink it away from the premises. We have a number of customers who are keen and enjoy having a takeaway. And we also potentially could do deliveries through Deliveroo Justice and people like that. And we would like those people to be able to take alcohol away with them with their food. So this would be restricted to takeaways, not to just customers walking in to have a drink and going somewhere potentially not particularly responsible to go and have a drink. There would therefore only be sealed containers. And then we also have the issue of while they're waiting for their food to take away, could they have a drink? That's not off sales, that's the fact that they wouldn't be eating on the premises. And that was the purpose of removing the condition 1919, where alcohol should only be served to diners seated at a table and consuming a meal. And Lee was quite keen about this and I personally have had a number of occasions, mostly Indian takeaways, where you could go in for a takeaway, they sit you down at a table and ask if you'd like a drink while you're waiting. It seems perfectly natural to have a drink while you're waiting. But you're not going to have a lot to drink because you might well be drinking and driving, which you would not belong to be doing. So I would like condition 19 to be amended rather than withdrawn. At the moment, we've proposed that it would be removed completely, which entirely, understandably, has caused some potential upset in terms of the premises virtually becoming a bar or a pub where people could go and drink without the need for food. My proposal is it continues as it says, that alcohol shall only be served to diners seated at a table and consuming a meal, with one exception where people who are collecting a takeaway being allowed to have a drink inside, indoors, not outdoors, while they're waiting for their food. We touched on the word of substantial meals and ancillary to alcohol and such like. And I think the wording at the moment is actually quite sensible, to be served to diners seated at a table and consuming a meal. We have two tills inside, one for liquor and one for food. So people cannot actually order their food and their drink at the same time. So there is a level of risk where people could go to the bar for drinks first and then subsequently not automatically go to the other till to order food. If they go to the till for food first, not an issue. They'll order their food, go to the bar and then they'll be having the two together, either outside or inside. We've been talking about what we can do about this and we don't want to make it awkward. But I think that anyone working at the bar, if someone goes and orders a drink in future, will need to state, yes, I can serve you on condition that you are ordering food from the other till at the same time. And then to do checks wherever they sit to make sure that they're eating as well as drinking. It's primarily a street food type of Thai restaurant. So I don't want to get into plates, knives, forks and god knows what. But for me, a substantial meal is a meal that requires a knife and a fork rather than just finger food, which takes away the element of snacks. I'll leave that to your decision as to whether you feel that should be amended or not. There seems to be potentially an opportunity to improve supervision. I think everyone's very much hands on at the place. And we probably do need to make sure that we have a rotor of people going outside to supervise people who are having a meal on the decking as well as a drink and making sure that furniture is not taken outside to supplement the decking area. I'm quite happy to have a condition on that basis, that we have increased supervision to ensure that customers obey exactly what our licence dictates. As far as the decking area is concerned, I think that we should have a stipulation that people should be seated if they use the decking area. We've got two photographs here, one which appears to be pretty much as I would hope it to be, which is this one where everyone is seated, pretty much exactly where we want them to be. And then we've got one perhaps taken a little bit later because there's more cars, where we have, I think it's three people on the wrong side of the decking area. Everyone else still seems to be remaining seated. We don't want that and we will not accept that. So we would have an increased level of supervision to ensure that anyone using the decking area would be having or having had a meal beside the drink. And let's face it, not everyone drinks alcohol. Alcohol is actually relatively unpopular at the moment. There are so many non-alcoholic and alcoholic drinks going on to the market. I think it is inappropriate to think that everyone who's going to go to Authentai are automatically going to be drinking alcohol. And certainly, they do not have problems with people drinking too much. And it's just not a constant or daily occurrence. People are going there for the vibe, for the food and for a drink as well. So I think we should A, state that we will have improved supervision on the deck area to make sure that everyone is seated at all times. No furniture can be brought from inside to supplement the decking area. And if it gets full, then it probably isn't appropriate to set up a queue because it's literally the car park. We'll just have to say to people, look, we have no space at the moment. We can reserve a table for you in 20 minutes, 30 minutes, please return there. But we can't just have people loitering around, potentially getting a drink and causing a noise and potentially being disruptive. I'm very, very concerned obviously about the fact that there is a nursery nearby. But to me, it's whatever. But to me, it's whatever hours Authent Thai is open, we have the same responsibility from eleven in the morning when we open the door until whatever time we're allowed to open at the end of evening. From what's been said about the hours that children are collected, I don't see really any issues from us changing our hours to be more consistent with other restaurants. I mean, when you look at our hours, I was literally, I don't think I blinked for about five minutes. You know, open one day five, three o'clock, one day four o'clock, one day twelve o'clock mysteriously on a Friday. You know, we would like to be able to sell alcohol with food from twelve under the conditions that I've been proposing with a terminal hour for alcohol at ten thirty at night with the premises being closed at eleven. Along with the additional supervision to make sure that we do not have future issues similar to the fourth of April, which I've allowed to be expressed today because it was a serious incident, albeit only ten days ago. The commitment of Mr and Mrs Dibble, to me, is pretty near to being exemplary in terms of making sure this premises complies with the law and complies with all other social expectations. And I really hope as a result, this premises is allowed to be given its chance to trade to its full potential while at the same time looking at every avenue of improving relations with the nursery and other businesses in the area. If we could, we'd have a speed limit in the car park. I'm not sure whose it is and whose responsibility that would be, but we're more than happy to put sign up saying this is a an area where children can be present at different times of the day and we would like to impose a five mile an hour limit. Now, it wouldn't be necessarily policed, but I would like to think that people would actually recognise the importance of children and speed and therefore reduce to a crawl to find their parking space. If children are primarily inside the nursery between ten in the morning until four in the afternoon, why shouldn't we be able to trade from midday? Yes, they have an outside play area. All schools have ways of marshalling their children to walk from A to B, down roads, across roads and so on. This is a car park where people will be moving very slowly and also the premises is not going to be hugely busy at lunchtime. If it's going to be busier than it is currently, it's going to be in the early period of the evening. But then potentially without people being rushed to leave at nine o'clock in the evening. We've already suggested through Julie that that may not be an issue to trade a little bit later. But we still don't want to trade as late as a pub or many other restaurants. To summarise, my offer and proposal of conciliation would be for hours to be changed from eleven o'clock at night, seven days a week, to twenty-two thirty in terms of sales of alcohol and for everyone will have access to premises by eleven o'clock at night. Remove the non-standard time of New Year's Day. For off-sales to be limited to people who are coming to collect a takeaway where they could have a drink indoors while they're waiting for their food. Floor plans have been updated and therefore the final condition of nineteen, which has been, I think quite understandably, the greatest concern for all, is that we will retain alcohol shall only be served to diners seated at a table and consuming a meal, whether that be the decking area or indoors. With one acceptance of people coming to collect takeaways. We will guarantee to improve our supervision of the decking area, indeed the premises as a whole, to make sure all customers know exactly what the conditions of our licence. Still relatively young, seven months-ish that it's been trading. And I think Lee perfectly reasonably asked for this variation to enable him to, let's say, optimise his trading opportunities without causing major issues in the image of the community. Indeed, he is intent on working with the community to improve everyone's feeling of safety. Children, to parents and everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up to questions then now. Unless Mr Dibble wishes to add anything?
No, thank you.
Covered it well on your behalf, I think so. John, would you like to start us off this time? Barbara?
Thank you, I always do. I mean, first of all, I'll take issue with your statement that's only been one incident, one reported incident. But from experience, there's often a series of less serious ones that build up to someone actually taking the decision to report. So I accept that, you know, it is a serious one. But I suspect there have been other things leading up to it. And the second thing is about the children, I mean, come on. You know, it's not just sort of one little use for one part of the day. Sort of if it's a well-run nursery, they have a programme of constant movements. So they're the two issues which I think are distractors. Right, okay. Now, this was a takeaway before and obviously you're seeing the opportunity to develop it. And I don't blame you for that, but the issue is the location. So, I mean, can you tell me, and I'm not so sure that you will, sort of, what times are most profitable? You've been operating for seven months, so you're still building, but what times of the day are most profitable?
I would need to ask Mr Dibble to contribute if he may.
Afternoons.
Afternoons?
Yeah.
So really, so that's where there would be the conflict with the nursery, basically. And I suspected that. Now, the other thing is you say you've got two tills and you know you do your accounts. Which is more profitable, food or?
Food.
Food, it is.
Hundred percent, yeah.
So you want to develop the food side and you think that having the alcohol?
Well, the alcohol sales has made the food more profitable. It goes hand in hand, it's made it more sellable.
Yeah, no, that's fair enough. At the moment, sort of, what's your customer base? Is it mainly families? Is it sort of?
Families, a lot of families.
Right.
A lot of retired people in there. That's hence why the sales alcohol want to go forward. Yeah, just basically families.
And so what you would argue is that this Friday event was a one-off with having so many tradesmen on a Friday afternoon?
Yeah. There's an electrical company, what uses the same access as us. And yeah, it was a one-off. There were leaving, someone leaving work.
How big is the car park? Because you're talking about controlling it a little bit better and you don't know who owns it. How big is it?
I think it's about hundred metres long.
How many spaces is it approximately?
No, a hundred and twenty metres long or something.
So it's quite a big one, but is the whole car park used or just your end of it?
Everybody uses the car park, it's communal.
So basically, it wouldn't be possible to control traffic movements? It would just be a polite request type of thing?
Yeah, there's no way of controlling it.
Yeah.
There's other businesses, other businesses use it, Arctic lorries and stuff like that. It's not just myself. There's other businesses using it as well.
No, that's fair enough because we've only got a small snapshot of what's actually surrounding you.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you've addressed a couple of my other points already. I mean, and I think sort of, you know, the action plan, easy to devise an action plan, it's making sure it's implemented correctly. So what staff do you have? Because we know from experience that sometimes it's easy to sort of intimidate staff and get away with it as a bolshy customer or one who just doesn't accept their restrictions. So how can you guarantee that you can implement your action plan? Because we have the list of, you know, if you like, failures to do so.
We've got an action plan in place and regular checks. That's what we do.
Right, so and how many staff do you employ normally?
Four, twelve to fourteen staff we have.
Twelve to fourteen, on any one time? You say your busy time is?
That's as busy times, we'll have as many staff as that, yes.
Right.
And then as quiet times, maybe three to four.
Right, no, that's fair enough.
Yeah.
I think that, I think they're the main things, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, I mean, clarified to me, which was, you made your question, you know, what you intended to use the site for, which you said is a restaurant. Simply a restaurant site and takeaway. Does, what proportion of the business is takeaway? And how does that impact on sort of comings and goings into and out of the car park at various times of the day?
Do you want me to answer or you?
Yeah, yeah, fair enough.
What proportion of businesses take away is to people dining?
Yeah, and I'm just thinking in terms of people going in and out of that car park, you know, how busy, what times of day or night would people be coming in for the takeaways? And just looking at the impact of that?
Dinner times, so from twelve o'clock, we have a lot of people coming collecting food every day. And then on an evening time from, let's say, five thirty onwards. So you've got a rush from eleven thirty till two. And then after that, maybe from five o'clock till seven or eight. That's the busiest times with traffic.
You talked about even offered conditions on increased supervision of the external areas. But when there was this incident recently, Mr Dibble had to be called out and had to come to the site to attend. And if he's not around or able to attend, how can you assure me that you could manage that situation more effectively? Because surely you shouldn't have to phone up the owner every time there's a problem and get him out.
I think there is a point here where there should be a duty manager who is a personal licence holder. Mrs Dibble will be there as well. But I think we would ideally have within that group of staff someone who is specifically the leader and has as one of his or her responsibilities to walk the course on a regular basis inside and outside to make sure everybody is complying with the conditions laid down.
One of the things, concerns that have been raised, I'm not sure you've certainly not addressed to my satisfaction and possibly not to this, is around actually children using external areas at the same time that people are using the restaurant. And whilst you can ensure people are sat down and that car park restrictions are managing, I haven't got people waiting. If people are having a drink and shouting and swearing and whatever, as people do, that will impact on the children, that does impact on their safeguarding and does limit the time that they can use the external areas. And I'd certainly love to see kids being outside playing rather than stuck inside all the time. How can you lessen the impact of that sort of behaviour?
Do you want to go first? I'll go first.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's a two-way street. The children, who are obviously younger at a nursery, are going to be supervised. And we will do everything we can to make sure that they are an adequate distance such that they are not upset, concerned or even scared by what they might hear or see. But I think with a personal licence holder and a duty manager, basically the same person being on site the majority of the time. And if not, then maybe that will be when Lee definitely will be there. That that matter will be controlled from our end. You know, it is not acceptable for people to go to a restaurant and start swearing at the top of their voice. Now, I expect people to behave with proper levels of decency and responsibility. And if there have been indications in experiences where that has not been the case, then we need to elevate the quality of our customers.
And I think probably just finally from me. Obviously, the nursery and other businesses were there when you selected this site. So, double check, what was attractive about this site for your business and your business model? And what consultation did you have and what chance have you had with other businesses on site in terms of getting set up and moving your business forward?
Why did we open there?
I think, yeah, what attracted you to that site, given the nature of the site and the businesses already there? And what sort of, how, you know, consulted with the other businesses and, you know, developed a working relationship, you know, with your immediate neighbours?
Continue, I'll answer this, so.
I can attempt to, but obviously I wasn't involved at the time and I'd rather it to be faxed in the room.
The reason we opened there is because it's on a main busy road. Where obviously you get noted more. And it wasn't in a built-up public area, like a domestic area. And there were other businesses there, so I thought it would be the perfect location. But that was it really.
And, you know, when you were planning to move on, did you talk to other businesses? And, I mean, do you continue to talk to other businesses about how things are going?
Yeah, we always do. We're always the one to be kind and help other people. But the indication to the planter in the photo, other businesses wanted me to put that there, so I did do. So, yeah, we do speak to other businesses.
Thank you. Sam, is there anything you'd like to ask the, oh, sorry, Barbara's coming back in?
Thank you, there's two things really. You say it's a very big site. Isn't there, is there another location on that site that you could opt for or could have opted for? Because it is the proximity to the nursery that, you know, safeguarding, that is a huge concern.
Yeah.
So.
Is there somewhere else, what, I can operate?
On that site? I mean, so it was purely?
Yeah, yes.
I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this question, but sort of the nurseries heard your reasoning for it and your mitigation.
I think they will have the opportunity to sum up at the end, so they.
Thank you, okay.
If their opinions have changed at all during the course of this meeting, they will have a chance to say that.
Thanks very much.
Sam, is there anything you would like to ask?
Thank you. I guess just in terms of the last seven months of what you've heard today, do you still think it's the perfect location?
I do, yeah.
Yeah. How do you feel about hearing that the nursery has sort of had to change a lot of their timetables and operation and that the children have had to be kept inside, whereas they didn't previously? How do you feel about that, having heard it?
I don't. I'm not sure, but I'll answer that question.
So you're currently the DPS?
Yes.
Do you intend to stay as the DPS?
Yes.
So essentially by being DPS, what's your role in the business?
To make sure everything's kept to the same standard of safety, is being looked at daily.
So if we're looking to appoint a duty manager who will also be a personal licence holder, would you then no longer have that day-to-day management of the premises? Would it sort of be passed to them more?
Yes, it would be.
And you'd just sort of take a bit more of a backseat?
Yeah, I'd still be, I'd still, yeah.
You're still going to keep premises licence on, yeah? Yeah. Okay, what's the capacity of the premises?
As in seated or?
Eight?
I think it's about sixty.
Sixty seated?
Yeah. Internally and externally, roughly.
So you've currently got a licence that I think Julie mentioned, which is condition twenty-two, which is in relation to checking the area of the premises. So the external area being regularly monitored either by CCTV and/or staff patrols. So what's the current process for that?
Yeah, so daily, we, staff have got an outside checklist and then also a CCTV checklist and it's checked daily. Two or three times a day. I've monitored that, so I'll just say.
So if they sort of see an issue or something's flagged on the CCTV, what would happen then?
We deal with the situation.
You or they?
They, staff. They, staff.
So your busy periods of sort of the midday rush from when you opened, so lunchtime and then dinnertime again, sort of half-five until eightish, I think you said. So why do you want to extend the licence?
Later. More customers.
Have people sort of spoken to you and expressed a wish that you were open later or?
It's not that between, you, you, you have a, a seating time for two hours. So if people are coming at six o'clock and seating at six, that's two hours. So at seven, eight, and then we stop serving alcohol at nine, so we can't get another.
Can't turn the table around, yeah.
Can't.
So I don't know how up to date this is. Um, but there's obviously the sign outside that says Authentite Microbar, is that still there?
Yes.
But you're not wanting to be a microbar, you want to be a restaurant?
Yeah.
So why are you advertising it as a microbar?
That's when we first advertised it, it's not been took now.
Thank you.
Do the responsible authority and followed by interested parties have any questions for the applicants?
Yeah.
Sorry, I've got six questions, please. So the first question's for you, Mr. Denny. Um, if you could, uh, please just clarify, you suggested that the operator's been exemplary in compliance with the law just now in your submission. Um, could you please confirm that Mr. Dibble received another warning, which came from the council's licensing officer, Miss Bradshaw, about non-compliance just seven days ago on the eighth of April? Perhaps Mr. Dibble could confirm?
What was that?
Did you receive a verbal warning?
No. No, we haven't.
So according to my information from Miss Bradshaw, she said that you were given another verbal warning. You must comply with your licence conditions on the, on the eighth of April. Okay, thank you. Um, another question, please Chair. So Mr. Mr. Dibble is DPS. Could you explain, please, how are you going to ensure compliance with any licence conditions going forward? Because you've had such difficulties with compliance so far, how are you going to ensure?
The reason, well, going forward, we've got an action plan in pre- in place. The reason, I was so slow before is because I'm dyslexic and I'm not very good at reading and, about anything to do with my hands on good way. So that's the reason I was slow, I needed help, I got it. Obviously, Mrs. Bradshaw and the police officer and yourself.
Yep.
Give me advice and help me along the way by doing so, yeah.
So, so how are you going to make sure that you comply with the licence?
Because we've got, now we've got an action plan in place, so going forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um. Mr. Denny, in your submission just now, you suggested alcohol's becoming increasingly unpopular. Um, could you explain, please, why the applicant seeks to relax conditions so that more alcohol can be sold, rather than, for example, selling soft drinks with food? What's the rationale?
The rationale is that we wish to extend the hours when alcohol is available. And in a, in company with the food, that does not necessarily mean more alcohol.
Thank you.
And also there will always be a range of soft drinks, non-alcoholic and alcohol-free products as well.
So am I right in thinking it wouldn't have a significant impact therefore if, if alcohol sales weren't permitted during certain times? Because they're less popular and there are other alternatives on sale?
If, um, if we were granted the extended hours now, I propose to twenty-two, thirty instead of twenty-three, we could obviously get a second turnover of a seat, um, on particularly maybe a Friday evening, Thursday evening, whatever. Then that will lead to more customers who may well drink alcohol with the food. But until we know those customers and come and order, I can't predict whether that's going to increase our alcohol sales or not. I don't think it's going to lead to an increase in the amount any individual drinks alcohol, but we are looking to have a, a moderate increase in the number of customers using the premises over a period of time.
Thank you. Um, a question for, for Mr. Dibble. Back on the seventh of November, when we had our first meeting with police licensing, safeguarding and the council. And that's the point where, because there was no DPS in place, you were, um, told to suspend alcohol sales. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
And you said at that time that that was an issue because you've got a private party the next night and you'd already got the supplies in, the stocks. Do, does the premises host private parties and functions?
No.
Okay. Uh, could you clarify, was the, was the group that we see in the screenshots from CCTV on the eighth of April, was that a leaving party?
Yes, by, but not organised by us.
But it ca- it came to the, how do groups arrive? So on, back on the seventh of November.
It doesn't happen, it's never happened before. There, there's a business user on the same industrial estate, what's shared, our communal area. And someone was leaving and, and they've just turned up and decided to come here.
Was, thank you. Was that the case as well on the seventh of November? When, when, when your licence was suspended until you got your DPS sorted? So that was a planned party?
No.
But you said you bought the alcohol in ready for it? I'm just trying to understand.
We, we never had, we never had one.
Because the licence was suspended.
Yeah, because you did grant it, yeah. So we never had one. It was a birthday party, hence food, drinks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At, at the premises.
It was a booking, yeah, at the premises.
Okay.
For food and drinks for a birthday party, yeah.
So is it fair to say that occasionally you do host parties?
Not parties, it's bookings.
Okay.
For food and drink, not necessarily a party.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Denny, you mentioned, uh, it's a two-way street when you're managing situations that might arise when customer behaviour in one business, that Authentite might impact on the business of children being at the nursery, it's a two-way street. Co- could you tell us from your part how staff are going to manage the unpredictability of customers' behaviour then? Members of the public coming in, as, as Lee's just said, we, we can't predict who's going to come. How are staff at the restaurant going to manage customer behaviour? When toddlers are, are in the same, you know, the same locality?
Yeah, just as a point of detail, um, I don't know the answer to this yet. Um, and if toddlers are going to be taken, for instance, to the play area from the nursery, does that involve them walking right past the entrance to Authentite? It does.
Yes.
So they'll be walking literally alongside here, yeah? So I would suggest that we have obviously lines of communication, so for.
Well, what's that? Customers, schoolchildren will be walking along here, do we say?
That's what Judith said.
Well, it's nowhere. Your, your, your nursery is maybe to scale over here.
Yeah.
Why would there be children down here?
Oh, sorry, I thought you, I saw, I apologise, I thought you said, would the customers be walking by? So the children are, the children are in an outside play area, about seven cars' distance from the bar and external seating area.
I'd say about at least fifteen car distances, fifteen, twenty.
There's a line of fifteen cars in total, maybe.
It's, it's, it's in, within hearing distance and within, I've been, I've visited the site. Um, so the children are secure in a play area that's located in the car park. But customers to the bar and restaurant have to go past that to access the restaurant and park their cars.
Okay.
Thank you.
I still stand by what I suggest is that we need to create better lines of communication so that the right time is used both by the toddlers to go to the play area and back to the nursery. And equally that we advise you of a period of time when it is appropriate and suitable for children to be out there.
Yeah, I, I, are you suggesting that?
It's not perfection, but the whole idea of having good lines of communication is to communicate together and find suitable solutions.
Thanks, Mr. Denny. I think, I believe that's what we're here to do today. Um, so thank you, Chair, no more questions.
Thank you. You, you've taken great consideration to look at the end of the day and how you might, um, make it more attractive to get your licence at the end of the day by reducing hours and everything. But you haven't once really touched on the early part of the day that you're requesting to start serving alcohol from, I can't remember, eleven or twelve o'clock, twelve o'clock in the daytime. Um, which is bringing it, bringing it forward by another four hours every day. But you've not really talked about how you could potentially change that aspect. Because that's the aspect that, um, affects us in terms of safeguarding. So at the minute, we don't like four o'clock, uh, during the week and certainly don't like twelve o'clock on a Friday. That is the issue where we have, is on a Friday, which is what you're asking to do every day. Um, and to me, it, it would have been nice to have seen maybe some thought process going to how you could mitigate that rather than suggesting that we should change the times that we allow the children to go out according to your busy periods of time. Um, I, I think that's a little bit unfair. Um, you also, uh, mentioned very much about the alcohol being for takeaways only and waiting for, for your meal. My experience of a takeaway is that you ring and they'll say, yes, it'll be ready in twenty minutes. And you go and pick it up and you take it away. I don't understand why there would be a need for someone to have to have a drink while they're waiting. If you have ordered a takeaway, you're aware that that food is likely to be ready. So I, I, that, that doesn't really make much sense to me. And you also referred to they go for the vibe. Well, the vibe is, um, it's, it's lovely to go somewhere and have a great vibe, but the vibe often comes from merriment and, and chatting and joking and, and, you know, potentially raucous behaviour. Um, and that is, is a vibe that adults will create for themselves. Um, it's not a vibe that I want any of my children to have to witness or be, 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 um, presented with. And that's unfortunately the reality of having a place that serves food and drink on the same grounds as a, as the nursery. I think I'll just, I'll, I'll rest it there. I, I think from our point of view, we would like to not see any decrease in hours in terms of what alcohol sales are allowed. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I acknowledge the fact that I did not spend much time on my submission about the early hours of selling alcohol from midday. Um, obviously it had been granted on Friday. I hadn't actually, um, had any communication about any issues resultant of that. Uh, and most restaurants, when they're open at lunchtime, would be able to offer alcohol with the food. Um, it seemed to be more likely to be a concern at the tail end of the day rather than the beginning of the day. Um, I personally, well, I shouldn't say I personally, there are not so many people who are having multiple drinks of alcohol. Um, particularly if they're at work, um, even if they're not at work between, say, twelve and three. Um, and I think that the restaurant ought to be more than capable of controlling that situation on a day-to-day, literary, individual situation. No one's ever going to be served who are drunk. Chances are, if they come at twelve o'clock, it'll be the first drink of the day, they're having something to eat with it. Um, I would like to think that we would be able to do that without causing any conflict. But with improved communications with the nursery, we will do everything we can to make sure that we can both live happily together. What's your second point? Sorry, that was the first one, I struggled to remember that one. The first one was.
I talked about your vibe.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I use the word loosely, but the idea is that people will come to relax in a restaurant. Not necessarily get noisy and into sort of party mood. Um, I was just trying to infer that people will be coming to relax and enjoy their experience with us. Um, for food and drink while they're on, on, on the premises and enjoy the atmosphere that we create. And that they create.
Thank you. As, no further questions. If the responsible authorities and interested parties would like to briefly sum up their submissions and whilst it's for the licensing subcommittee to make a decision based on what we've heard and in line with the legislation. If you have heard anything today that changes anything, your views on anything, we would be interested in that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Unfortunately, I, I haven't heard anything that would convince me or satisfy the safeguarding children partnership that, um, that we could rely on, uh, compliance with licence conditions or a sufficient understanding of licensing legislation. Um, I'm, I'm still not clear about the style and character of the premises, whether it's a, a microbar or a restaurant or a place where people can go for a, a family function or a party. Um, and I'm, I'm certainly remain concerned about any relaxation of alcohol sales um, restrictions due to the proximity of the, the, um, nursery to the premises. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I don't, I think I've spoken at length about some of the issues that concern us and I don't want to, um, repeat unnecessarily. Uh, I think from our point of view, um, although I don't doubt that, uh, Mr. Dibble has a commitment to comply and an awareness of what's going on, I think everything that's come from the safeguarding board and, um, and, and our experience demonstrates that it is out of their control, that they are dealing with human beings that, uh, uh, you know, maybe non-compliant. Although they would like it to be compliant, it, it's the wrong location to, um, enforce that sometimes for them. And, um, I think the hours that they currently have are unsuitable, but that was given already. That, um, and certainly to change those hours to allow them to sell alcohol from in the daytime, which with, with or without food, um, is, uh, we would request that common sense prevail and that we, that that is not allowed to happen, um, in close proximity to the nursery. Thank you.
Thank you. And now would the applicant like to sum up, please?
Yes, of course. I'll just go through the, um, um, suggestions of conciliation from the original application that I've made today. So first of all, we ask for, um, condition nineteen to be removed, which was alcohol shall only be served to diners seated at a table and consumed at a meal. We now propose to keep that on licence with the one, um, ex- ex- extension, uh, exception that someone coming to collect a takeaway will be able to have a drink indoors while they're waiting for their food. Yes, some people order by phone and turn up at the approximate time they're expecting the food to be available, in which case they'll collect their food and they will go. Um, but if people come and order on site and then have a period of time to wait for their food, we would like them to not be confined to just having non-alcoholic drinks just during that short period of time. Um, adding off-sales to the licence would be entirely restricted to people who are asking for alcohol to accompany the food that they're ordering to take away from the premises. Um, for sales of alcohol, um, we originally, um, were asking for midday till twenty-three hundred hours on a seven-day-a-week basis. Um, I think we could have some flexibility for midday. I think it's a relatively busy period of time and I'm sure Mr. Dibble would like that to be retained. and I'm sure Mr Dibble would like that to be retained. But I don't think it will make any difference to the way we promote the licensing objectives as to whether that was changed to two in the afternoon from midday. I think that would just mean we will lose customer that we would otherwise have an opportunity of receiving. So twelve midday through to twenty-two thirty, which we could even reduce to twenty, twenty-two hundred hours, but we've got twenty-one hundred hours, I think twenty-two thirty is a reasonable time, such for everyone who's left the premises by eleven o'clock at night. As a result, the opening hours of the premises would now be from eleven in the morning for staff to arrive and such like and set up and for the premises to be closed and locked up by twenty-three hundred hours. Finally, we will remove the request to include New Year's Day.
Thank you. So Jim, could we have the options available to us, please?
Thank you Chair, the options open to the committee are, one, to grant the premises licence in the terms requested, two, to grant the premises licence with conditions, and three, to reject the whole or part of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your representations. Could I now ask people to leave the chamber while we take legal advice and come to a decision? And we'll happily invite you back in and tell you what that decision is as soon as we've...
Thank you very much.
Mary Wethersley and your time and your helpful representations this morning and this afternoon. The decision of the Licensing Committee is to accept parts and reject parts of, of the application. We are rejecting the application for earlier opening times, we are... The decision is to limit you to the current, uh, hours for alcohol sale from four o'clock during the weekend, twelve o'clock on a Friday and the other hours. We are however minded to accept your offer to extend opening hours to ten-thirty and close the site at eleven PM of, of an evening. We are also going to keep, as, as you offered, condition nineteen. We are going to allow some off-sales from the site, but those off-sales will be in sealed containers to be removed by either delivery drivers or people collecting takeaways, not for people to sit drinking while they're, they're waiting for a takeaway. The main reason we came to this decision is, one, that the premises hasn't been open for a long time and for a significant part of that, it hasn't demonstrated great compliance with the licensing objectives. We respect how you've worked with safeguarding and with the police and we hope to see that going forward and indeed with other local businesses on the site to, to achieve a balance. However, we did not have confidence that these hours wouldn't impact on other site users and in particular the nursery, who themselves have adjusted their operating times and the way they work to, to accommodate things and to, and to try and help resolve the situation, which we appreciated. I, I, I would also say, you know, should you wish to come back and look at something different in future, if you can demonstrate a good track record and good working relationships and that it won't impact on licensing objectives, then obviously the committee will be happy to look at it. I would also say to the, the objectors here that, you know, the granting of something by a licensing doesn't grant it forever. And if there are things that aren't operating well within that licence, in the first instance, we'd like you to talk about it. Approach the business and say, this isn't working, this is impacting on us. But if that doesn't resolve it, a licence can be reviewed at any time. And if you ask for a licence to be reviewed and bring evidence to show the impact that licence is having, then again, as a committee, we will sit and look at that and come to a decision based on whether we need to change the licence because it's causing problems. We hope we don't have to do that, we hope you work well together and that this doesn't impact on children or on other businesses in the area and that your business is able to thrive and that, that everyone does well out of it, that, that's always our objective here. But that's the decision we've come to, tho, those are the reasons for it.
Yeah, that's what you've already got. But that's the hours we've already got, so we've left it, isn't it?
We, we have also, and they weren't here to give their objections today, but unresolved, unw withdrawn representation from a local resident who did complain about noise and issues. And the, the fact that, again, you've, very early into your licence, you've required an action plan to be put in place. Before we give you more leeway, we would like you to demonstrate that you are a responsible licensee and that you can manage the premises responsibly and not impact on either businesses or individuals in, in the area. And, you know, we have evidence to show that that's not been the case. We also have evidence to show that you've got a great willingness to turn that round and to do things about it, which we appreciate. But we need to become, before we, we give people additional hours, then we need to be convinced that we are not going to impact on any of the licensing objectives and what we have today doesn't give us that confidence. However, you can appeal our decisions and Sam will detail your right of appeals, as can the objectors, because nobody got what they actually asked for today. So in our unique position, we are able to upset everybody in, in the room and everybody can appeal what the decision we've just made. So Sam?
Yeah, thank you Chair, I was going to say rights of appeal all round, so obviously you're probably going to have some difficulty with the decision likewise with you. So that appeal is within twenty-one days to the magistrate's court, should you wish to. So following the hearing, everybody will receive a notice setting out a summary of the evidence before the committee today, both written and otherwise, and then how members came to their decision and confirming what that decision is, because it appreciates a lot to take in verbally. So essentially you can use that notice to lodge the, to lodge the appeal with the court. If that progresses, magistrates will sit exactly as members have done today, they'll look at all the evidence before them at that time and consider whether the decision made today was right at that time. So they can change that decision or they can keep the decision the same. That's the process for that, but just want to thank everybody for the time today, appreciate it's been quite a long hearing as well. So I'm grateful that everyone's taken the time to come, thank you.